Yeah, that one says three something right there.
Mr. Chair, we have everybody in place and ready for the MP.
If everyone's ready, we'll get started. My name is Bill Robertson. I'm the chairman of the Metropolitan Planning Commission, and I appreciate everybody turning out today for our June meeting. We have several items on the agenda requiring public hearings. If you wish to make a comment on an application, we have comment slips at the speaker's stand. And for future notification, it is important that you fill out a slip and drop it in the box when you go forward to speak. And as you speak, give us your name and your full mailing address before you start your talk. We'll call each case on the agenda in order, and hear first from the applicant, then those speaking in favor. Ten minutes are allotted for the principal spokesperson, three minutes for each additional speaker. We'll then hear from those wishing to speak in opposition. Again, ten minutes are allotted for the primary opposition speaker, and three minutes for each additional person speaking on that matter. One representative of the applicant can then speak in rebuttal if desired. After hearing comments on each case, the board will then immediately deliberate and vote on that case before moving on to the next case. Please note, when the board is deliberating, members of the public are not permitted to comment. Any member of the public can request a copy of the board's decisions on a particular case by contacting our office, (673) 6480 after 1:00 tomorrow, or by accessing our website, shriportcatoMPC.com. We have no consent agenda items on the agenda today. All of our zoning recommendations are submitted to the city council for a final decision. Please note, it is your responsibility to contact the council members and let them know your thoughts on a case if it passes from us to the council. Please turn off all your cell phones. And we appreciate your compliance. Typically, we start our meetings with a prayer and a pledge, so if you care to join us, please stand. Chris, if you could lead us in the pledge, and Dr. Kivo, can you read a prayer for us?
Yes.
We'll have the prayer first.
Let us bow our heads, please. Gracious Father, we come humble. We come as your servant, asking for your grace, your mercy. We are so grateful for your presence in this building. We ask that you allow your grace and mercy to guide this meeting and that we act on one accord, for these are the blessings I ask in your name. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, why don't we move right into approval of the minutes from the May 3 meeting? Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Second.
Mr. Fred moves to approve. Mr. Sater moves to second that. Is there any commentary? Any corrections to the minutes? Okay, please vote your machines. Should we see some tallies up on the board? We're approving the minutes of the previous meeting. Can we start over on this?
Yes.
Okay, if you're in favor, please vote yes. If you decline, please vote no. Have the gremlins been able to work on the system again?
I pressed yes, but it just keeps blinking.
Same here. A little technical difficulty.
Stand by, folks. Do we have a tally?
Yeah, I pressed it twice.
It's doing the same thing. Yeah, it's not showing up.
There it is. Is that the vote?
Yeah.
Okay, the minutes are approved. Thank you. Now we have a presentation by Janelle Mason, CEO of Ronald McDonald House Charities of Arkansas.
Mr. Chair, if I may, may I introduce my guest to the board today?
Please do.
I had the wonderful opportunity of meeting Ms. Mason, I guess, a couple of months ago. She came to me about some incredible needs of a development that she was in charge of that was coming to the city of Shreveport. And I got so excited that I wanted you, as the planning commission board of the city of Shreveport, to know about this development and, without going into a whole lot, I'd just share with you. She's from Little Rock, Arkansas, and she will make a presentation about the Ronald McDonald House charities.
Very good, Ms. Mason. Name and address, please.
Janelle Mason, 1501 West 10th Street, Little Rock, Arkansas, 72202, Ronald McDonald House Charities of Arkansas. Well, I'm so excited. Mr. Clark, we had such a great visit, and thank you for inviting me to be here today. And so much has happened since we met two months ago. I did pass out a sheet for you all. We've been working on this project in the research phase for about two years now. And I'm excited to tell you that we will be building the first Ronald McDonald House in northwest Louisiana, right here in Shreveport, the Ronald McDonald House Shreveport Bojeur. We are in a fundraising campaign. It takes money to build this 24,000-square-foot house, and we have raised a little over $4.3 million towards our $10-million goal. I was in this room last fall when the Caddo Parish Commission approved a $500,000 gift. And then last year also, the city of Shreveport donated $800,000 towards this project. So we are so excited to have the support of this city in bringing this project. I don't know if any of you have stayed in a Ronald McDonald House, or know someone who has. But a Ronald McDonald House provides a free home away from home for families of critically ill children who, while their child is in the hospital. And families stay with us for a night or two. They might stay a few weeks or months, and some have stayed with us for over a year. When they stay at the Ronald McDonald House, they'll have a private room with two queen beds, a large bathroom, and laundry on each floor. All the supplies they need are provided. And then, as far as their day-to-day services, they have a hot dinner every night that's typically cooked by volunteer groups from the community. They'll have breakfast that they can make on their own, and lunch items in the house. They'll have snacks to take to the hospital, because we all know it costs a lot to feed a family during the day. And the great thing about a Ronald McDonald House, when people tour our house in Little Rock, they think that it looks like a nice hotel, but it is a community of support. We'll have 20 families every night staying there who share their stories, share their suffering, and support each other, and help them move forward. I have, today, I'm so excited. Lori Moore is with me. She is our mission director, who is right here in the community. And Lori will be overseeing this project and this house when we get it open in, hopefully, early 2025. That's our goal. We've got to get to 6.4 million raised to break ground, so we're just 2.1 million away. When families stay with us, I think about Kennedy, this little girl who's been with us, with her family, since December. She's seven years old, and she's being treated for cancer. Typically, she's at the hospital for one hour a day. And then, when she comes back, she's not feeling well. It takes time to get through the rest of the day. But I can't imagine a family like Kennedy's staying in a hotel. I don't know if you all have ever traveled with kids before, but I've got three boys, and I remember being in a hotel room and then bouncing off the walls and wanting to play in the elevator and do other things. Well, the Ronald McDonald House has play spaces, activities, and lots of other things to keep kids busy. And then, an exciting feature of the Ronald McDonald House is we will have day use. So families can come from the hospital who aren't spending the night with us and just get away from the hospital and all the, kind of, the tension of the child's room. And they can come over. They can take a shower, do laundry. They'll be able to eat. We'll have, of course, Wi-Fi. The kids can play on the playground and really just get away from the hospital. You know, the Ronald McDonald House focuses on keeping families close, and that means keeping the family together as a family unit, and then keeping them near their child. The property where we'll be building this house is at 9100 Susan Drive. It's across from Willis Knighton South. They are donating this one acre of property for us to build this house, knowing that the Ronald McDonald House will serve families at every hospital. So it's not an exclusive to Willis Knighton. Their name won't be on it. It will be serving families that have a child in any hospital. Just like in Little Rock, we're on the hospital of one, I mean, on the campus of one hospital, but we serve all hospitals there. When a family checks in, they get to have access to everything in the house. And you think about a family that comes from 10 miles away, 20 miles away, 30 miles. When your child's in crisis, you don't think clearly when you're driving. You are, you don't want to leave your child. We had one mother that we interviewed here who said, "It's unnatural to leave my child in the neonatal intensive care unit." So being able to stay near my child, drive a few minutes, that's really important to us. We'll also offer transportation, because what we found in our research was that families could not be near their child for different reasons. Obviously, for, they didn't have transportation, so they might be here for their surgery or their treatment, but then they had to go back home. So we will be utilizing the Sportran dedicated medical bus route during the day, and then we will transport families at night if they have an emergency and need to be at the hospital. So first of all, they don't need to worry about transportation. They'll have daily essentials. You can literally stay at a Ronald McDonald House and not have to spend a penny. So personal items, shampoo, deodorant, toothbrushes, all those things that you would need, you really don't have to leave. We know that each night, there are families that sleep in their car in the hospital parking lot. We know tonight there will be families doing that. So having this Ronald McDonald House open as soon as possible is critical for families and for these kids who are trying to heal in the hospital. I don't know if you have some questions you'd like to ask about this?
Board members, have any questions from Ms. Mason?
Well, our website is on the sheet. It's RMHShreveportBojeur, shreveport-bojeur.org. I forget the dash. And I encourage you to, we'll have updates there as they continue. Our founding donor list continues to grow, and we're just excited to be part of the community. We'll have an operating budget of about $650,000. We'll employ around 20 people. And we'll have a beautiful building in addition to your community.
Ms. Mason, how many Ronald McDonald Houses do you have in the United States?
There are 189 in the United States, and there are 383 in the world.
Mr. Sater?
You can work on your questions. She'll be back in Shreveport on July 25 to speak to Southern Hills.
Yes, July 25. I'm here every two weeks for three days. Sometimes, I'm here every week. But I'm so excited to have Lori join our team, so I have some boots on the ground here.
Any other board members?
Well, just thank you for choosing Shreveport Bojeur area.
We're so honored. Thank you. I did not mention this, but I don't think, families stay free at the Ronald McDonald House. There's no charge for any of our services. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Mason.
That's awesome.
Mr. Clark, do you have some remarks at this time?
I guess it would be a good time to make the remarks. Mr. Chair, because some of the audience may be here for the recommendation of the master plan update. I'm reading a letter from the city attorney. It is recommended, it is the recommendation of the city attorney's office that the report from the master plan committee be tabled or pulled until further review and research can be done by the city attorney's office. So based on that recommendation from the city attorney's office, Mr. Chair and board, we remove the report of the master plan committee from the agenda today, and it will be replaced on the agenda at such time as the city attorney advises us that everything is clear.
Can you briefly describe the reason why we're updating the master plan?
I, I would love to, I can just briefly read to you that Chapter 13 of the Great Expectations 2030 Master Plan, entitled Stewardship and Implementation of the Plan, outlines the need for regular review of the master plan as a public process. Scheduled public process should be done every five years to confirm or revise the vision. As you well know, we haven't done a update since the plan was adopted in 2010, so we're running behind in that respect. A master plan must reflect the needs and aspiration of community residents. It must be a flexible document that can be changed according to circumstances. A series of public meetings in conjunction with public surveys and well-based opportunities for public input should be at least every five years. The process should include a summary, a progress made or implementation of the plan, unforeseen circumstances, both opportunities and obstacles that affect implementation. After review of the vision, principles, and goals of the plan, the public should then be asked to confirm, revise, remove, or add to this plan. So this process will allow the public, which is the citizens of the city of Shreveport, to take a look at the existing plan, the Great Expectations 2030 Master Plan, go through a series of public engagement all around the city, make recommendations for changes, and once that process is concluded, which generally takes about a year, then the master plan will be updated, and it will outline how the city will develop and progress going into the year 2030.
Board members have any questions for Mr. Clark on this matter? So bottom line, we're not going to talk about it today.
Bottom line, we're not going to talk about it today.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, we're going to move right into the public hearing section of the meeting. We have item number seven now pending, case 22-236-C. It is a zoning request by Mr. Leonel Pedron. The location is Merrick Street on the north side of Merrick, approximately 130 feet west of Roosevelt. This is right off of the Yuri Drive Service Road. The existing zoning is R-15. The request from Mr. Pedron was to convert it to C2 in order to build office space. Mr. Pedron has requested deferral.
That is correct.
He is not ready to move forward at this time.
He would like to be able to come before the board and outline exactly what plans he has for that location.
Would it be appropriate to address the letters from Ms. Jackson's Stoner Hill Neighborhood Association?
I think so. I mean, we've forgotten a number of letters of opposition that came, but that should, and we would hope that you would, if there's anyone in the audience that wants to speak in favor or against the application, you allow them to do that.
That would be good. Ms. Jackson's unable to be here today because of a conflict in her schedule. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this application? Mr. Pedron on Merrick Street. Is there anyone here to speak in opposition? We do have three or four letters, one, two, three, four, five letters, it looks like, submitted by residents in Stoner Hill, all in opposition to the rezoning. I told Ms. Jackson I would refer to them during the meeting. Is there a motion to defer? Ms. McCullough says defer. Mr. Elberson seconds that motion. Is there any further discussion that needs to be had on this matter? Okay, the motion is to defer, and move on to the next item. Please vote. Tick tock, tick tock, tick tock. There we go. Okay, it's unanimous in favor of deferral, so this matter presumably will be taken up by staff and the commission at the next meeting. Okay, item number eight is a special use permit and site plan. The case number is 23-48-C. The applicant is Taylor Family Property. The owner is Taylor Family Property. The location is 527 Stoner, which is on the south side of Stoner, roughly 300 feet west of Highland. The application is to establish a special use permit at this location, which is Zone C2, to permit a food truck park. Mr. Taylor's been in extensive negotiations with the staff, and he's not quite ready to move forward, so once again, he requests this matter be deferred. Is there anyone here to speak in favor of this matter? Mr. Taylor on Stoner. Anyone here to speak in opposition? Okay.
Move to defer.
Once again, Fred says move to defer.
Second.
Second by Mr. Sater. Any more discussion? Okay, please vote. Okay, moving right along. Case number nine is a closure and abandonment by the city. 22-2, excuse me, 23-2-CAC. Closure and abandonment of Brock Street, well, the location is Brock Street, between Westport Avenue and West 70th Street. Is there someone here from the city engineer?
Yes, Mr. Chair, they made me report an untruth to the board this morning, but there was supposed to be someone from property management here today. But still, we recommend, as we did in the pre-briefing meeting, that you approve the closure and abandonment.
Okay, so staff is requesting we move forward to approve this matter, this closure and abandonment? This is a 20-foot-wide right-of-way located in this neighborhood. The Clark subdivision, I believe it is, no relation to Mr. Clark?
Yes, sir.
No relation?
None whatsoever.
Very good. Same spelling, though.
Some people get it right. Most people don't.
I understand. Okay, I have a question. It just occurred to me, looking at the staff report on this matter, that some of these right-of-ways and abandonments that the city is involved in that seem to be quite regular on our agenda could lend themselves to a path of some kind. Is that appropriate or inappropriate? Has that ever been contemplated? Pedestrian path, bicycle path, anything like that?
I think that's an excellent idea, and we will get someone from property management to come and come before you and answer those questions.
There was a proposal at one time for what the author called a string of pearls.
Yes, sir.
Bike paths throughout the city. And anybody who travels knows that bike paths and pedestrian paths are, they're all over America. So can we kind of be cognizant of that next time something like this comes up?
We will have someone come in and talk to you about that process. That's another part of what the master plan updating process will be consisting of, making the city more walkable, more, less car transit and so forth. But we will have someone come and talk to you about using abandoned. But, you know, what happens with these abandonment of streets and alleys is it becomes the property of, the property owners that are budding them. It could get to be an interesting discussion that they wouldn't be able to get the property. We'll have someone come and talk to you.
Yes. I was involved in a rail trail debate some years ago that got very interesting.
Yes, sir.
Okay, is there anyone in the audience here to speak on this matter? I don't want to overlook anyone. Mr. Smith, no cards turned in on this one?
No, sir.
Okay. All right, I'm looking for a motion. Did we already move on this? Okay, can someone make a motion?
Make a motion.
Mr. Elberson, motions to approve. Ms. McCullough says yes. Do we have a second? Okay, Ms. McCullough says second. Any further discussion? Please vote. Okay, so we're on item number 10. That is a zoning request. The case number is 23-73-C. It is, it's submitted by Mr. Marvin Baxter on behalf of himself. And the location is Russell Road at the intersection of Russell and Bonnie. The existing zoning is R-15. The request is to rezone from R-15 to C4, which is a commercial designation, and the proposed use is personal storage. Is Mr. Baxter in the room? Would you like to step up and describe your application, sir?
Good afternoon. I request at this time, I have to speak into, on my address?
Name and address, Mr. Baxter.
I'm sorry.
We need to know who you are.
Marvin Baxter, 1323 Denise Circle, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107. I would like to ask at this time that for a motion to defer, because after, with the suggestion of the planning commission, she wanted us to move to C4 for this project, which, after doing some insight in it, it's more than what we are asking for. So we wanted to get together and try to come up with another plan. So at this time, we're asking for it to be deferred.
Very good. Is that Mrs. Baxter?
Yes, yes.
Hi.
Andrea Baxter, 1323 Denise Circle, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71107. As my husband said, we just wanted to put a storage building on that lot to house our vehicles and some other stuff, because where we live, adjacent to the woods coming right off of 220, the roads are very bad, and they gets into everything, vehicles, RV, and they're just notorious. And when he came to see about building the building... And when he came for to see about building the building, we were recommended a C-4, but after extensively speaking with Mr. Clark, that we found some avenues that we make and put a storage building and make it more uniform and conducive to the area to look more like a housing and be able to do it under the existing zoning without having to change, because we weren't asking for a zoning change, we just wanted, we didn't realize it was that entailed. And that was the recommendation from the MPC, Mr. Clark's office, to change the zoning, but then they said, no, you can't do it, but there was no other way. But after we dug a little bit deeper, we feel like, after speaking with Mr. Clark extensively, that we can do it under the existing zoning, which make it more into what we needed to be in our neighborhood, because we live in that neighborhood. We're not trying to come and change the neighborhood. We've been there for thirty-five years, so we have just as much interest invested in that, because when we look out our front door, we will look at that building. And, you know, we're not trying to change our neighborhood, we just want to get our stuff safe and make it look presentable to keep our neighborhood intact.
Very good. Well, we appreciate y'all coming today. We're not gonna get into an extensive discussion, but let me ask the question, where is your home in relation to this property?
Within six hundred feet.
Oh, well, I took the map down. When we look out our front door, we would be looking directly at that building. We stay in the circle, in the very middle of the circle. You see Mac Marcha?
The covesack, right there in the middle.
Come straight down. We live in that house right in the middle of the circle, and the property is right ahead, over there by the R-1?
Five.
Five.
Yeah.
Yeah. When we look out our front door, we will look directly at that building. So it's not like we're trying to, you know, do something, just come into the neighborhood and do something. That's our home for thirty-five years, and we don't want to make it not conducive to what we have going on. We just want to secure it, since they changed two twenty and all that water sits back there, it just pushes rodents out, and they just get into everything. And we just want to move stuff to higher ground, away from the rodents.
Higher ground. Any board members have questions? Yes. Dr. Tebow.
Yes. Hi, I'm Dr. Tebow. My parents, I grew up seventeen twenty-nine Bonney Street.
Okay.
So I know exactly where this is.
Yes, ma'am.
So I have some concerns that I've expressed
Yes.
to the committee. So when I was visiting my mom over the weekend, when you, when I'm leaving off of Bonney Street at the stop sign,
Mm-hmm.
that land is already cleared, there's no house there, there's just a shed
Correct.
there. So I'm trying to figure, if you're saying your house there, you can see it out of your front door, I don't see a house there, I just see your land
We live in the circle.
and a shed.
We live on Mac Marcha, which is a covesack,
Uh-huh.
and our front window, we can see our property.
When we open our front
Yeah, from a vacant lot between two homes, we be able to see it.
Yeah. When we open our front door, we look directly at that shed.
Okay, so the rezoning that you're going to consider, or the property that you're gonna put there, is that community property? Is that for the community? If you are, if you're adding value to the community, whatever you put there, or is it just for your personal use?
It's for personal use, but we're gonna make it conducive to the property, though it look good with shrubberies, and we did bring, I think it's in my folder, we did submit a preliminary drawing to Mr. Clark, just to show him what we could do to make it look like it belongs in the community, not an eyesore, with, you know, a nice building with shrubbery and stuff to make it look good. We're not trying to throw, like I said, this is our community. We've been there for thirty-five years, and we're not planning on going anywhere. And we just want to make it look right so that we can use it to secure our things. Like I said, the rodents are very bad back there, coming out of those woods behind from my five twenty, because it stays wet back there, and it just got, you know, my husband just got his car out the shop, and this is about the third time we went to use RV, the generator was eaten up. So we just trying to get some things secured. But we also, like I said, want to make it look good for the community. We don't want to just throw something in there. We were never really trying to change the zoning, that was just the recommendation that we had to do. So after, like I said, speaking to Mr. Clark, again, we may be able to do it under the existing zoning, just make it look like it fits into the neighborhood, not just a tin bit of throw down, you know, like I said, shrubbery and some stuff to make it look good.
And also, I'd like to add that Blue Tide came out, which is a concrete company. We asked about the permit and everything, as you see, the ground been broken on it. We didn't, didn't know, since 2016, you weren't able to do this. Found out in 2016 that you couldn't put it unless a living dwelling there. So with that being said, he should have pulled the permit before he even broke ground, huh?
And that's one thing, we got twenty-five thousand dollars tied up in this project that we've been fighting to get back, because when we talked to the concrete company, they said, no problem, we can pull the permit. We asked about permits, he said, it's just a simple formality. We pulled the permit, then they came up and broke ground, then they said, oh, we can't get a permit. So they wanted to keep like eight thousand dollars of our money, because they made a mistake. So that's another fight.
Did I understand, did I understand you say you pulled the permit?
No, they weren't able to pull the permit.
They broke ground on those set forms before we pulled the permit.
Oh, okay, okay.
And we relied on them to know, you know, their job and to making sure that we were in compliance. We also have a down payment on a building that we can't get back for this project, but that was all because the company that we hired to do the concrete work, and everybody just said that it's okay, they had it taken care of. And then, once we spent money, then we found out that it was a project that we had to put a hog to.
Mr. Clark, when those permits, when those permits are issued, the resident have a right to see those right before any developments of any kind? Can you request, you know, me as a resident or citizen, can I request to see the permits if I'm told that the permits that have been pulled?
And I'm gonna yield, it's been a while since I've been in that arena, because I'm gonna yield to the zoning administrator to, if you just asked the question once again, whether or not, she was asking whether or not neighbors could request to see permits that have been pulled.
Yeah, basically, I'm just, I'm sorry, but basically, the thing was, after we gave him fifty percent down, because it was gonna cost fifty thousand just to put a slab, after we gave him the twenty-five thousand, you know, we had some rain, blah, 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 and next thing I know, he out there breaking form, I guess, because he not keeping his word on the contract timeframe. So when I saw about that, partially my responsibility is to check and see that it have a permit, but he had already broken ground, so I figured he had it.
Oh, okay.
And I'm still gonna ask Mr. Jordan to respond to your question.
I understand it myself.
And I understand.
And even being, you know, being single, if I'm having work done and it requires a permit from the city of any kind, I would be interested to actually see it. You know what I'm saying? Because of what they're saying.
And I totally agree with you.
The work got started and the permit really hadn't been pulled.
And I want him to just respond that, I will get you an answer at a later time
Okay.
as to whether or not you can just ask to review a permit.
Okay.
I mean, it is a public, it is a public document, so
Exactly.
you can request to see it. I mean, it would be up to the permit department discretion if they just let you see it or not, or if they make you go through the proper channels, go through the city attorney, get all that.
Yeah, because you have to acquire that.
With the permit, you know.
Yeah.
Right.
Twenty-eight thousand, so.
Yeah, that was a lot of money, not to know that you actually have a permit.
Right. Well, he told us he was pulled the permit, so we didn't have no reason to question it. And like I said, we came home one day and they were out there working, and then we went to see how it was going, and he didn't have a permit. He said, well, he's going to take care of it tomorrow. Because he said it was just a formal, he says, since it's a vacant lot, we just pouring concrete, we just doing online, there's no red tape.
Right.
But that wasn't the case. So again, like I said, you know, we just, we're not trying to disrupt our neighborhood, we just, because that's our home.
Right, I know.
Well, Mr. and Mrs. Baxter, we're confident that your work with our staff will bring about a good outcome. So we appreciate y'all being here today, and we, I think the board is prepared to honor your request to defer this matter today.
Okay.
Is there a motion?
Move to defer.
Second.
Moved by Ms. McCullough, second by Mr. Moss. Any further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, just
Oh, I'm sorry, do we have to?
Go farther, you can, need to ask if there's anyone here in our position.
I'm sorry.
No problem.
I jump-started the discussion. Is there anyone here to speak on this matter in opposition?
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. and Mrs. Baxter, y'all can sit down. Yes, sir, come forward, please. Thank you, Mr. Clark. Yes, sir, name and address, please.
Yes, sir. Joe Robinson, Jr., fifteen twenty-eight Russell Road, one block down from Ms. Baxter. I just want to know two things, and I got two questions, one from you and one from member Tony Tipido. Number one, whatever they own, now, I know the taxes, I'm a pretty smart man, taxes are different than residential and commercial. Now, if this go commercial, how much my taxes gonna go up? I don't own no commercial, I'm retired. So rezoning gonna put me in a commercial bracket. So that means everybody out here in this audience that ain't got a business, or they gonna have to pay the taxes that the Baxter's gonna have to pay. But they, they living off of income like me, you see? And I got no problem with what they asking, but y'all are the city council, y'all got the power, y'all got the people. Everything happening to either one of y'all, yeah, I see you shaking your head.
We're not the city council. We're not the city council, sir. That's not our duty.
You know, so this gonna affect everybody. The vote that y'all carry gonna affect everybody. It may not be your people, but it's gonna affect somebody in there that's gonna affect that don't have a business. Look, how many people you see out here you think got a business? How many? Raise your hands, you got a business, any type of business. I don't give a law or more business, raise your hand, that you working for...
Mr. Robinson?
But, but see, my, that's my point.
Okay.
My point is, y'all want to vote on this, but what about us?
So
And she pass by my house every day, she say she pass by there, fifteen twenty-eight, look it up, you pass by my house, cross the street, in front of my house is where the city's supposed to be mowing grass, it's up to my cellphone. You don't believe me? Go by fifteen twenty-eight down Russell Road, the city's supposed to cut it.
Mr. Robinson?
Yeah?
You need to address your remarks to the board.
Well, okay, yes, sir. But, okay, I'm addressing to you, how come you didn't come out there and cut it? You sent me two letters
Mr. Robinson.
for a property.
Mr. Robinson, we're not city council. We're MPC, this is not the city council.
Well, wherever you are, whatever you're voting for, it's gonna hurt us, and you don't live here, so you ain't got to deal with it. Once you do your little vote, you gone, you know, you don't even live here. I got to wake up every morning and look out my door, the grass up to my hip, but the city's supposed to cut it. Now, take your vote and see how I feel and everybody else out here. You know, I ain't, I'm not, I'm just expressing my, you don't believe me, just go by my house, take a picture and look at it.
Mr. Robinson, I'll get in contact with your city councilman in that district, and I'll make sure I get that grass cut for you. I can do that. I can make a phone call.
I thank my councilman, Ms. Taylor.
It is.
I, yeah. I'm not no dummy, and I'm not even from here.
I understand.
You see?
We get that taken care of.
You know, I'm ashamed of we business running this state. I'm ashamed of it, I really am, because you don't think about the people, you got family.
Mr. Robinson?
Mr. Robinson, hold on a minute.
Mr. Robinson.
You asked a question.
So, I, I fully understand your concerns, I, I do. My, my mother still lives on that street. I will probably recuse myself from voting, because that's, that's really close, that's a, that's a conflict of interest for me. But I do want you to know that we do understand, I'll say, I understand, because I don't speak for people in general, but we're all human, we, we have feelings. I understand everything that you're saying. I'm just asking that you trust us to, together and to meet with individuals, this is my first time hearing of that, I just saw it a couple of weeks ago, but just, you just kind of got to give us a chance here to just kind of, kind of talk about it. But I do, I do understand your concerns.
Yes, ma'am. And I tell the mayor, the governor, same thing. You see, one thing about life, people don't feel it until it happen to them, let a loved one or somebody, and it happens, you, don't matter what color, but when you dead, you dead.
Right.
Then you know.
Okay.
Thank you for your comments, Mr. Robinson.
Thank you, Mr. Robinson. Yes, sir. We are entertaining opposition to this matter.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Arthur Russell, eighteen oh six, Mac Marcha Drive.
I'm sorry, sir, can you repeat that?
Arthur Russell, eighteen oh six, Mac Marcha Drive, St. Port, Louisiana. I'm in opposition of this planning that the Baxters, Baxters are planning, and, and the simple reason is, we want on three vehicles, and that mean one of them didn't get driven that much. Then we start accumulating rats and rabbits chewing up the wires in my truck. I had to have it repaired. Now, that's just three vehicles, but they talking fifteen or twenty. That's what the lady said in the meeting, that she said, I got fifteen, thirteen more cars. But I know they got quite a few cars, and I understand that, but if you got more than three cars to two people right in my back door, you talking all kind of rodent that you bringing right to my house. Now, across the street from our house is commercial, and we witnessed all type of bad people go over there, taking air conditioning, copper, doing unlawful thing, and this is commercial across the street. Now, can you imagine if they're gonna just take an air conditioner and you got all these vehicles here? This is a zone set for, for, for bad people to come and do what they want to do. And that was the reason that I was writing this opposition, because my wife and I have been there for three to four years, and we probably, we upgraded our house, we upgraded the property, and I can understand where the gentleman was talking about when I said we upgraded our community, because the grass that he was complaining that the city should be cutting, we do that. We cut it, we don't wait on the city, because we know the city's not gonna get around to it, and we do want it looking nice, and some people just, they can't do it. Our neighborhood is peaceful, we got babies that, even their kids grew up in the neighborhood. We got babies that have nowhere to play. We don't have the luxury of sidewalk, they have to play in the streets, they have to play on the corner by the mailbox. Making this commercial would just eliminate all that. Our elderly people walk in the circle, up and down the street for their exercise, as well as the young. And I'm not that young, too, I do my exercising, I have to walk some. But the Baxters have what you call moved up, they, they moved around the lake, they got a nice home over there, I hadn't seen, but I can imagine it's beautiful. And can you imagine putting all this stuff in their new house around the lake? They wouldn't want it, just like we don't want it. We don't want that stuff in our neighborhood. I mean, that's just too many vehicles, and we, we already experienced the, the, the problem that it's gonna bring. They all, all these vehicle, man, look at the tires we can get, look at the rim we can get, the battery.
Mr. Robinson, can you wrap it up, sir?
Wrapped up, gone.
Okay.
It's done.
Thank you. This may, this may be continued till next month. Anybody else in, in opposition who wants to speak? If you're gonna speak, come on up.
Come to the podium. Come on down.
You don't need to raise your hand, you just need to come on up. We don't bite.
Thank you. My name is Edith Bats McCray. My address is thirteen seventeen Denise Circle, St. Port, Louisiana, seven one one zero seven. Excuse me, I'm not used to speaking in front of people. But, um, my mother told me that we moved to the neighborhood, we were the, one of the first families, three of us came at the same time, June first, nineteen seventy-two. She said I was almost, well, I'll be fifty-two in September, and she said, you know, when I was, when we first got there, I would back, back, I would back away, look on the counter, find something to take, and then go reaching on the counter to get it, because I was that little. Well, I grew up in that, in that neighborhood, and once I was an adult, I came from that house to the one next door. So I purchased the home next to my parents. My concern is, if, if our neighborhood was to be commercialized or whatever it is, rezoned, I would, well, my concern is, I was doing some research, it said that once an area is rezoned, any It said that once an area is rezoned, any place, any business can come in and put up another business. What the Baxter's are doing, they, even though they're telling us that, and I'm not saying anything negative about that, that if they wanted to change their mind and make it something else, that they could do that. I don't know if that's true, but that's the research I did. So I'm one of the older people who walks every day in the neighborhood, and I, and I get to enjoy it, just up and down MacMarshall and Denise Circle. And I would hate for a lot of traffic to be coming through. It's a beautiful neighborhood in the MLK area. I've, I was raised there. I raised my kids there. And I would like to see it stay just like it is. Thank you.
Any questions for Ms. McCray? Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
My name is Joe Spears. Spears, S-P-E-A-R-S. All right?
And your address, sir?
Hmm?
Your address.
Oh, eighteen thirteen MacMarshall Drive, seven eleven zero seven.
You have the floor.
Hmm?
You have the floor. Go ahead.
No, uh, what happened was, all the people that lives in the neighborhood, they thought about, I'll take from Mayor Harris. She said, I guess our house is gonna get shot up now if we oppose, while I oppose. But I'm gonna tell you a story. Back in ancient Israel, there was a guy named Ahab. He was the king of Samaria. And a little fellow was named Naboth. He had a little vineyard. Just one little vineyard, right outside his palace. So Ahab wanted the, the garden, you know, the vineyard. So he asked him, said, look, why don't you sell me this, uh, garden? Or, uh, I'll give you some money. I, I can move you to another place. Naboth said, no, I can't do that. It's my inheritance from my both fathers. And then his wife tells, he went and laid down and turned his face to the wall, sucking, you know? So Jezebel, I know everybody heard of Jezebel. She said, I get it for you. So what she did, she went to writing letters in his name, and using his seal, giving them to the elders and older people in the neighborhood. And then she said, I tell you what we let's do. Let's have a fast and let Naboth be at the head of the table. And then she got two good-for-nothing men to testify against him. And so what we'll do, say, uh, we'll, uh, say he crushed God and the king. And she, you know, she wrote all this in this, uh, note and using her husband's seal. And so, so now, two good-for-nothing men at the head of the table with Naboth, it was fast. They decided they, oh, he did all of this. He crushed God. He crushed the king. And so let's take him outside and stone him. They didn't have AK-57s then, or forty-sevens or weapon I had when I was in them. But anyway, long story short, they took him outside and stoned him. Stoned him to death. And so what happened was, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna get to the point in a minute.
You don't have another minute, Mr. Spears. You gotta wrap it up.
So, so they stoned him, so now, he took control, uh, control of the vineyard. And, of course, you know, she, uh, God had something to say about that. You know, she was eaten up by dogs and so forth and so on. And what, uh, these people got all kinds of rental property, all kind of folks that, uh, stay in these houses. So how do we know that if he wanna retaliate for the one that's in opposition to him, how really do we know they won't do like Jezebel did with the two good-for-nothings? Who, okay for a couple of months' rent? I tell you what you do. You go down there and shoot Mr. Spears' house up.
Mr. Spears, uh, uh, you gotta, you gotta end your remarks now.
I know, but just one more thing. I, I, I know, I know I got to get out. But the thing is, how do we know that he can't find that for a couple of months' rent? You go down there and shoot his house up. Turn his gas off while he laying up there sleeping. Turn it back on. So for, if something like that happen, 'cause I'm de- definitely oppose. I mean, I'm here to tell you, I'm not satisfied with this. I don't want a liquor store across the street from me or something like that.
Thank you, Mr. Spears.
And so, if anything happen, you know who's dodo led it?
Mr. Spears, I just got a question.
See what I'm saying?
Mr. Spears, question. Has any of this stuff ever happened to you before? I'm saying threats or anything like that?
Well, no. But look, the man, I understand, we was at another meeting. Uh, no. Ms. Mayshack opposed him. He run up to her with his finger in her face. So if I get a scratch, or if I lay a bone down in my yard and it's gone the next morning, the day that he's feet, cog his key, I'm gonna lay it at his feet. If anything like that says, I said, I understand happened, the leg at his feet.
Okay.
Okay?
Okay, Mr. Spears.
Yeah, he responsible.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Spears.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone else here to speak in opposition? Mr. Clark, can I assume we need to give Mr. Baxter a minute to rebut?
Give him three minutes to rebut, please.
All right, Mr. But, Mr. Baxter, you have, uh, did you say three minutes?
Mrs. Baxter, they both just...
Did you say three minutes?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Baxter, if you could address these items, or if you decline, it doesn't matter to us. We're probably gonna defer this matter anyway. So go ahead.
Uh, first, I wanna say, I totally resent that. Mr. Spears and I have been neighbors for thirty-five years, and we've never had any issues. Like I said, yes, and Mr. Russell, yes, we do own a house around the lake. But we live on Denise Circle. I have a business. I have two businesses. Well, I have actually three businesses in Southern Hills area. I don't devote any of my money to the Southern Hills. All our funds come to MLK area. We have a few rent houses in MLK area, yes. So I'm not trying to deface, deface my neighborhood or raise the property taxes up, because I don't wanna pay any higher property taxes. Uh, we went to, simply add a story to the bill. The recommendation from Mr. Clark's office told us we need to rezone. That was not our intentions in the first place. And that's why we are deferring this meeting today to work with Mr. Clark, because we found that we probably can do what we need to do within our own zoning without having to change it. As far as parking the cars behind Mr. Russell's house, we could simply just throw some gravel over there and park them over there anyway. But this is our home. This is our neighborhood, and we want it to be nice. So that's why we wanted to put a nice building, put some shrubbery to make it look like it belonged in there. But we're not trying to just throw some, we live there. And we live at that house. We don't not live around the lake. Yes, we bought half million dollar house around the lake, six, seven years ago. But we live at thirteen twenty-three Denise Circle. That is where we live. And all this other stuff, I don't know where it's coming from, because we've helped Mr. Spears. All these neighbors have been there. They were there when I came there, thirty-five years ago. And we've never had any problems. Uh, I work with the elderly and the disabled. That's what my businesses are. My husband has a venue of home under the King. So this is our home. This is where we spend our dollars. We do not want anything that's gonna deface our neighborhood. And that's why we want it to look nice. We're not, we don't wanna just throw a shit on. Like I said, I can throw some gravel over there and just go park my cars over there, as long as they on the grass. This is not what we wanna do. Yes, we do have several cars. We don't have thirteen. That's not true. But we have a few apiece, and we just wanna get them somewhere else. And, but we want it to be nice and consistent with the neighborhood, so that, if they are listening to what we're saying, that's why the meeting is being deferred, so that we can work with putting this in our existing zoning without having to change zoning. So nobody property taxes want to worry. I have a couple of rent houses. I don't wanna pay any higher property taxes. And also, Mr. Spears don't have to worry about any retaliation, because that is not true. My husband did speak with Ms. Mayshack, because she came around there, and we discussed what was going on. She had him confused with his brother who has some dump trucks down, because that was the first opposition at the meeting. They thought that we had dump trucks that we wanted to put over there. But that's his brother that has dump trucks. But he doesn't live in, in Shreveport. So we, he cleared that up with her. So that, none of that is true. And we're not violent people. We've never had any problem. We've been there, like I said, thirty-five years. We've never had a problem with our neighbors. And all the neighbors that are here have been there almost as long as I've been there. Someone was there when we came, and Mr. Spears was there when we came. So I don't know why he would even think such a thing.
Thank you, Ms. Baxter.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, uh, do I hear a motion?
Move to defer.
Mr. Moss says defer. Mr. Valderras says second. Is there any further? Excuse me, sir. Go ahead.
We might wanna be clear and defer until August meeting to allow for this process to occur, if you don't mind.
I'm, I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
If you would defer to the August meeting, so there would be no confusion, to allow an opportunity for us to work with the Baxter's and get the spud developed and so forth.
Are you okay with that amendment, Mr. Moss?
Yes, I am.
Yes, sir.
And Mr. Valderras?
Second.
Okay, very good. So the motion is to defer this matter until August?
Yes, sir.
The August meeting of the MPC, which will be on the first Wednesday of the month.
No, I'm okay. I thought I had moved to defer, but then he came back and did the amendment, so that's what we voted on.
Yeah.
Because I actually moved to defer.
Oh. But it was that, I guess it was out of order, because we, we...
We hadn't had...
Okay, we good. I'm good. Okay.
So we have a motion pending to defer this matter to August. Dr. Tebow, you okay?
I have one question. So we're deferring, does it still stay up under the rezoning from residential to commercial? That's, that's, that's my question. So if we're deferring to August, we're coming back still talking about the, the request to rezone that area from residential to commercial?
We're gonna change to spud. We, I thought we made that clear upstairs.
I, I'm just asking for clarity. It's, it's okay.
I'm trying to give you clarity.
Okay.
We're going to, uh, recommend a spud and a R O one five spud. Uh, we're gonna recommend a R O one five spud and not rezoning to C four.
Uh, Mr. Clark, you might want to...
For some residential.
You may wanna define what a spud is.
It's a small planned building development where we can go to, we, I thought we did a presentation to this, maybe not.
You got a, you got a new audience today.
Yes, yeah. But it, it would be a situation where the zoning will remain as a residential zoning. And they will, for, uh, in order to do what they are wanting to do, which is basically a C four use, you will give them ordinance relief in order to do that. And for that ordinance relief, they will provide amenities. You notice she was talking about providing extensive landscaping, making the building look more like a residential dwelling, and other amenities that we will work with them to present again to the neighborhood. They will have to go through another neighborhood participation plan meeting and share this with the neighbors, and then it will come back to you. And that's why we were asking for the two month period, so we can get all of that done.
Very good.
And so you all, you also explained that it would be limited, excuse me for breaking in. You also explained that it would be limited to only that particular use?
Right.
Through the spud?
Through the spud.
Okay.
Small planned unit development?
And that's, uh, planned unit development under five acres.
Any further discussion by the board? The motion is to defer until August. Okay, we're moving on. Thank you, Mr. and Mrs. Baxter. Uh, the case is number eleven on the agenda, twenty-three dash seventy-four dash C. This is a zoning request by Ms. Jackwell and Scott, who is also the owner of the property. The location is one 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 five Piermont, corner Piermont and southern. The existing zoning is C one. The request is to go from C one to C three for a reception facility. And you're Ms. Scott?
I am, for the record.
I recognize you from your outdoor advertising.
Thank you. I'm Jackwell and Scott. My address is, uh, four one Hamilton Road Suite, oh one ten. It's my office address, Fort Worth, Louisiana. Uh, I appreciate being here today, uh, to the honorable board. I am here in reference to property that I purchased on Piermont Road. There are some things I'd like to do with the property, and I, this is new to me. I have invested funds. I, unlike McDonald's, uh, they're talking about three to six million dollars. I've invested about a million dollars. Now, one of the reasons I purchased this property is there is a billboard on the property. So I'm told that because of the ordinance, I need to change from, uh, C one to a C three. And having done some research, I think there is a difference where I could avail myself to a C two zoning with the variance. Now, my request is, for the record, a C three. However, I'm willing to defer and, well, I'm to accept the variance of a C two. If you, if anyone has passed, um, Piermont Road, I have significantly changed that area. It, when I purchased the property, it was all grown up, uh, I painted, and I wanna make a difference within this community. So far, uh, I have not, um, named the business. It will be a, a office building and probably most likely my law bu- business. However, there is a billboard, and I wanna be transparent. There's a billboard that I think, uh, should be grandfathered in. I would like to change that from, um, the static to the, uh, digital board. However, I'm told that in order to do that, I would, uh, have, there would be a zoning change. Now, I understand that there's a difference, a big difference between a C three and a C two. When I initially requested the C three, I didn't have all, I was, I was advised by the digital people. But in reading, uh, I could, the same thing what I'm trying to do with that board could happen with a C two with a variance. So therefore, I'm before the board, I asked for the C three. However, I would accept the C two with the variance. Um, I don't think it's a need to defer, but that is my request. And if the board need more information, I can supply that now. As there are two buildings on this property, uh, uh, about a three thousand square foot building, and then there's a, um, a twelve foot, uh, building. So with that, I have not, there's a lot of renovation that needs to be done. So therefore, I would like to utilize that billboard, uh, for personal purposes with my law practice. And so I'm asking the board to, uh, grant a C two as opposed to the C three. And if I need to come back before the board on the C three, I will. I understand there's a big difference between the C three and the, the C two. Are there any questions?
Any questions for Ms. Scott?
Am I seeing here that the existing zoning is a C one?
Yes, it is a C one at this time.
And so you're requesting going from a C one to a C three, which is what's on the agenda? Is that correct, Mr. Clark?
That's correct.
So where do we get the C two from? That's what she wants.
That was one of the options, and Emily is here, and this is why I started asking her to come down. That was one of the alternatives that was offered to Ms. Scott.
And I read it. I read it, and it would fit my means, uh, what I'd like to do with the variance. So with that, it would not be a, I, I would, uh, be amenable to the C two.
Okay, you would be, okay, so your request would be from a C two to a, you would request a C two with a variance?
Yes. Yes, from a C, I'm a, I am C1 right now.
It would be a C2 with a special use permit that for the use, that special use permit for the reception facility would come back before this body for approval.
So has, we have to defer then?
Right, right. And then the variance comes into play for the sign, the sign that's on site for on-premise advertisement would be a poll sign, which is not permitted by right due to its current construction.
So we have to defer it and bring it back again.
So if you felt that the C2 was appropriate, you could make that decision for C2 today. You could recommend that for approval today if you feel that that were appropriate.
Okay, well.
But the special use permit would be another application that comes to you at a later date.
And with that, I, I have invested quite a bit of funds to, in this property so that I understand, even though I have to come back for the board, I would like to, if you all can grant the, the C2 today, that would be good. And if there's opportunity for me to come back for the variance, that's fine. And, and so I'm having to pay, I've paid to be here for the first, for the C3. And now I have to pay, I understand, for the variance to come back on variance. But if you would much obliged, I would accept the C2.
To Mr. Chair.
Mr. Elberson. So my understanding is we can vote for the C2 today. Okay.
Okay.
All right.
And the C2 would permit the reception facility?
Correct.
Okay. So does that divorce the sign from the reception facility?
That's a separate issue.
That's a separate issue. She has to come back for the variance.
Okay. Let me ask a question about the sign. If Ms. Scott advertises her law office on the sign, that makes it a billboard, an off-premise advertising sign, correct?
That was the question I was going to ask. We were under the assumption and the application is for a reception facility, not Ms. Scott's law office. If that's changed, then it changes the whole complexity of the application.
Not necessarily so. There, there's two properties and both of them will be, it would be reception. However, on the, my position is that that sign is an on-premise property. When I purchased that property, that's the reason I purchased that property, because it had the sign. Now, that sign in itself is like $180,000. So that's an investment. I'm investing in this community. So, which means that I would not have purchased that property if I could not use that sign. Now, there's a two, two pieces of property on that, on that, two buildings on that land. So, and that's why I said I would be amenable to the C2, and I could do the variance for if there's, for the billboard. Although, the billboard is on-site billboard. It's not like I'm purchasing a piece of property for a billboard. It's not, that sign has been there for years. And had it not been for that sign, I wouldn't have purchased that property. Now, other than that, I have invested a lot of money into making that corner look different.
You know, it seems to me, Ms. Scott, the property is suitable for a reception facility. With regard to signs, there are really two types. There's off-premise advertising, which is a billboard, and it has a set of rules.
Yes.
And then there's on-premise advertising, which is business signs, which has its own set of rules. And what Mr. Clark and I are, are asking is, what do you intend to advertise on the sign?
My business. Right now, if it's anything else, I, I realize I would take the position, I think you would take the position, I would need to come back. That is my sign. I'm going to advertise my business only.
Your business, your law office?
Yes.
So that would make that an off-premise advertising sign?
Well, off-premise, I'm, I'm, no, I'm on-premises. The billboard is on-premise. I didn't go by, I didn't go to Lamar to get the billboard. That billboard is on the property that I purchased that has been there prior to my purchase.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chair, because I'm totally confused now. Because we're trying to understand, will there be a law office on the property? Because if there is not a law office on the property, you cannot advertise.
There would be a law office on the property. There's two, there's, with the reception, there's two buildings.
So all you can advertise would be the reception facility and the law office?
Yes.
And that's it?
That's it. And if there is, if I need to do something else, then I would understand I would need to come back before you all.
You have to come back to the variance.
I'm only asking that I be able to advertise my law office and that reception. I'm not asking for anything at this point. And as a matter of fact, I have not, and it takes funds, it takes money to do all this. And so far, I'm just cleaning up and making that property look different, which I, if you pass by there, that, that property looks totally different than when I purchased it.
I used to work there years ago when it was a print shop.
Yes.
Yeah, I remember.
Well, if you, if you pass by there, I've made a difference. And you, as we go, you'll see, you'll see a big change.
When it was a printing company, the advertisement on the sign was for the printing company?
And that's where, it would be for my law office and that reception hall. That's it. That's what I'm asking for.
Okay. What's the pleasure of the board?
Hello?
Wait a second, wait a second. We've got to go through the process now. Any questions for Ms. Scott? Okay, Ms. Scott, we're going to have to allow others to speak now.
Yes.
Anyone else in favor of this application?
And I would say, I apologize. We did have that meeting. There was no opposition of individuals. In fact, everybody was excited about it. And, and we asked for the C3 and with some more reading, and that's why I went to the C2. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Anybody else here to speak? Yes, sir, go ahead.
Carlos Hartwell, 611-61 Canton Drive, Shreveport, Louisiana. In support of anything that Attorney Jacklin Scott does, is always going to be above board. So just wanted to leave that with you guys.
Thank you, sir. Anyone here to speak in opposition?
My name is L. Havard Scott III. I live at 1049 Southfield Road, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. This is the, the dark magic marker is all of my property. I have approximately three and a half acres, 14 lots, four houses that are sandwiched between Southfield Road and Oriole Court, which is an undeveloped city right away. At the base of Lexington, I own one house on Lexington. I'm within the 500 feet area. I know Jacklin Scott. We're not related. We've got the same last name, but we're friends. And I've been to political fundraisers at her house. And I talked to her several weeks ago and told her I support what she's doing with the reception hall. I have no problem with that. My problem is the C3. Because, and that may be moot after this meeting, but as you can see from the C3, there are no C3s except the bus station over at the corner of Southern and Southfield. And if you give a C3 to Ms. Scott's property, what's going to happen when the owner of the other half, I could say a printing company, comes in here and wants a C3 for the south, I'm sorry, the northeast corner of that intersection? And I don't know if any of y'all travel on Piermont, but all you have to do is, from about 3:00 in the afternoon until about 6:00 PM, Piermont is backed up all the way from I-49 to Lyon Avenue. I've lived, I grew up on Southfield Road. I was gone for 28 years. I'm a lawyer. I've been a lawyer for 45 years, admitted in Louisiana. I'm also licensed in three other states. The traffic on Piermont cannot handle much more commercial. And while I'm not concerned about Ms. Scott, I'm concerned about changing a zoning classification on that corner to something that is going to allow somebody else to come in and buy the property at some future time and put something that's really obstructive there. Couple of years ago, they tried to put a Taco Bell at that intersection, and we were able to oppose it and, and kill it. But anyway, I'm happy to work with Ms. Scott and Alan Clark and Stephen Jean I've worked with many times. Emily Tran has, I know, has been involved on this case. I want to thank them for the very thorough analysis that they did in the three-page staff report that was very helpful. I couldn't get to it until yesterday, but I appreciate it. And again, I, I don't oppose what Ms. Scott's doing. The billboard, you know, the billboard, she's recently put a new facing on the billboard, and I don't really mind the billboard. I've been an attorney for 45 years and I've never advertised, but that's, you know, whatever. The decision to change it to an electronic billboard, I, I don't know what the issues are there, but I'd be interested in exploring that.
Any questions for Mr. Scott?
I have a question real quick.
Go ahead, Mr. Elberson.
So just to clarify, you're, you're okay with the C2 zoning and you think that's okay for that area where the borders where you are?
I think I am. I had understood from Ms. Tran that there was a, a way to do this with a C1, but maybe that was a misunderstanding on my part.
C2 would be the option with a special use permit? C2 with a special use permit?
So I don't know. I'd like to do it the least change on zoning that we can get away with and still let her have what she wants. If you can do it with a C1, I say do it with a C1. If you can, if it has to go to C2, there's only one other C2 in that area, then, you know, you have to go to a C2. I'd be okay with that if you have to do it. I want her to have what she wants with her reception hall. Anything's better than a vacant building. And those buildings were vacant for, what, 10 years?
We discussed the C1 option with Ms. Scott. It would be the SPUD option, which was similar to something else that was discussed, but she was more open to the C2 option.
Two was what?
She was more open for the C2 option, but the other item that was discussed with her was the C1 SPUD option.
So I, I don't know, in light of that, if it's best to defer this and get this straight, what, what you're going to do instead of doing it on the fly. But that's between y'all and the applicant.
Any more questions for Mr. Scott? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Anyone else in opposition to this matter? Board members?
It's rebuttal time, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Clark?
Ms. Scott gets a rebuttal.
I'm sorry, Ms. Scott, you get a chance to rebut. Did you hear anything you want to respond to?
In all due respect, I do know, Mr. Scott, he is my brother, but he had the opportunity to come to the community meeting and I think he missed that. However, I have read the statute. I asked for C3. I come before you all in good faith. I've read the information and I'm asking for a C2. Now, he pointed out himself, there is a C3 in that area. So I didn't ask for the C3. I went to a C2. I'm requesting that this board grant the C2 with the variance, and I'm willing to go back and do what I need to do to make sure that I can avail myself to the sign that I paid for. I invested in this property. Again, if you remember, it was less than a year ago, that property looked totally different. I've invested my funds, my money and my time, and I'm asking for a C2. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Scott. Now, board members, Mr. Elberson, you want to make a motion?
Mr. Clark, I have a question. So the billboard is going to advertise the law office and the reception, right?
Events, yeah.
So my question to you is, is there a timeline for these two businesses to open up?
No.
No, you don't have that?
There are no discrete hours.
Okay. There's, there's not a way to have a specific hours of operation for these two businesses? So once they open?
It's regulated already?
Yeah.
It is regulated. The hours of operation are regulated by virtue of the zoning or the use.
My only concern will be if.
You have no discrete hours.
No. So my only concern would be that the business does not open, but the advertising on this billboard is still on.
Oh, you're talking about opening period, not hours.
Yes, as a, as a business for, for customers.
I'm sure with the investment that she's saying that, that she's made, she can bear the weight to get in, to start recouping her investment.
Go ahead. So if we approve or the C2 zoning with the special exception, we're not approving the use of the sign or does that get grandfathered?
No, it has come back before the ZBA.
It comes back before the ZBA. So we're not approving anything to do with the sign today?
Right.
No matter what we do or don't do.
And she's aware of that.
Okay.
Do I hear a motion?
Yeah, I'd like.
Go ahead. No, you go ahead.
You can continue to discuss. I'm just looking for a motion.
You go ahead and make a motion. That's fine. You're going to do the C2, so.
Yes. I'd like to make a motion to approve C2 zoning with the special exception.
Okay, move by Mr. Elberson to approve C2 zoning.
They will have to, she will have to come by for the special exception use.
We can't do that.
You can't do that today.
Okay.
And she'll have to go to the ZBA for the variance in the, for the sign.
Okay, revise the motion just for approval of C2 zoning.
Okay, move by Mr. Elberson, second by Ms. McCullough for C2 zoning of this property. Any more discussion? So it goes back to the ZBA to consider the special exception?
She will have to apply to the ZBA to apply for the variance. She'll come back to you for the special use permit.
Right.
For the reception facility.
Very clear.
So you'll see her again.
All right, very clear. Let's vote. All right, Ms. Scott, you got your C2. Thank you very much.
Appreciate it.
Old business. Any old business?
We have one more, Mr. Chair.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm forgetting Mr. Bailey. My apologies. Item number 12, amendments to the code 23-3-CTAC. MPC, Mr. Adam Bailey, you have the floor.
Adam Bailey, 505 Travis, Suite 440, Shreveport, 71101, MPC Staff. 23-3-CTAC is an amendment that adds language that concerns the expiration of a special exception use in Article 16. It would add language giving the executive director a 90-day extension for any special exception use approval by the ZBA, provided that a written request is received by the office of the MPC. The executive director would be authorized to grant a maximum of two extensions currently. Right now, the way the language reads is a special exception use approval is granted for 180 days. After that 180 days, it expires. They can't get any extension. This language would allow them to apply for it provided they did so before the 180 days expired, and he can grant them up to two extensions. MPC Staff feels that this is warranted for recommendation to, of approval to send it to City Council. Any questions?
Questions for Mr. Bailey on these amendments? This amendment?
Minute singular.
Singular?
Yes.
Any questions for Mr. Bailey? Anybody in the audience wish to speak to this matter, pro or con? Mr. Smith, any cards? Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Move to approve.
Mr. Moss says yes. Ms. McCullough says yes twice. Any more discussion? Please vote. Vote your machine.
Say, vote your machine.
Vote your machine. Thank you very much. Now, old business. Mr. Clark, any old business?
No old business, sir.
Any old business members? No? Any new business? And no new business either. They're all gone. Okay. Mr. Clark, you got the floor.
I'm going to yield if you would allow me, Mr. Chair, since it appears that there are citizens out of the audience with the directive report to the public comment section, and let the citizens, if they so desire, comment addresses forward.
So what Mr. Clark said is that it's the public comment period. Anybody have any comments on anything? Please take the microphone.
I guess since they put my card up, I should.
I guess since they put my card up, I should come up and speak. Thank you. My name's David Hackney. I live at 9660 Railsback Ridge, Shreveport, Louisiana, 71106. Before I start, I'd just like to thank this board for the work they do. I know it's time-consuming, but it's very important, and citizens do appreciate your work. Thank you. The reason I'm here today is the people in our subdivision have had a problem with our developer. And so, on November 10th, 2022, I contacted the MPC office and inquired about the Esplanade PUD. There's been a ton of litigation. Some of you are probably very familiar with it over the years involving this PUD. Mr. Clark and his staff have been very helpful, courteous, and professional in all their communications with me, and for that, I'm very grateful. Thank you, sir. The developer of the subdivision is Tim Larkin, specifically Larkin Development at Railsback LLC. As I understand it, the original PUD was approved in 2007. So, there are things that haven't been done in 15-plus years, and that's what the frustration of the homeowners are. The homeowners contact the developer and say, aren't there things that you have to do as per the PUD? And we don't get any reply from the developer. That's why we took it to the MPC. All we're asking for is whatever was agreed upon gets done. In November, December timeframe, Larkin prepared a map and annotated it with various things. One of the items was the gate, it's a gated community, is 85% complete. That was seven months ago. That gate still is not functional. I don't know. Maybe it's 86% complete now. Those are the type of frustrating things we get. We get a lot of legalese mumbo jumbo from them. The last communication prior to today that I had with Mr. Clark was on May 9th, 2023. Mr. Clark indicated, quote, "There are many legal ramifications that we are addressing, and a timeline is not available for review at this time." Again, that was May 9th, basically a month ago. Today, a couple hours ago, I received an email from Mr. Clark basically saying, "All these issues with the developer have been reviewed and cited with the developer." I was just shocked. I was floored. I couldn't believe it. There are things that are like sidewalks are not complete, sidewalks are broken, none of the sidewalks or streets have been dedicated to the city yet, and if I was the city, I wouldn't take them. They're eroded underneath, numerous sidewalks are cracked, sidewalks haven't been complete. There's 15 pocket parks, whatever a pocket park is. Lawn is non-existent. It's dirt. It's weeds. If you walk on it, it looks nicely mowed from time to time, but there are tire ruts, there are big holes. If you walk, kids try to play a softball game, they break an ankle. There's just numerous things that are not up to standard.
Any objection to giving Mr. Hackney another minute or two to speak? No objections? Two minutes. Go ahead, Mr. Hackney.
Thank you, sir. I appreciate it. So, Mr. Larkin and his attorney, who is a director of our Property Owners Association, sort of like a homeowners association, but since Larkin and the other people, they own property, but they don't own homes in there, they're the only ones that have a vote. None of the homeowners have a vote on anything until they do like a change of control, and they don't have to do that until they feel like doing it. And so, you know, the homes in there, we pay a fair amount of property tax. We would just like the PUD to be done, and we don't think it is. We'd like to have a meeting to review this report that just came out with the developer, developer and homeowners and the MPC. Thank you very much.
Any board members have questions for Mr. Hackney? Mr. Clark, do you wish to respond?
Not really. I'll just share, Mr. Chair, that we will be reaching out to Mr. Hackney to sit down and share with him the information that we received, how we came up with the conclusions that we did, and we are not opposed to taking the concerns he have and going back to the developer again. But we don't really feel that it would help us to try to set up a meeting with he and the developer of his subdivision. But if it comes down to that, we'll be more than happy to consider it.
Was the planned unit development approved by the city at some point?
It was approved by both the MPC board, I think it was back in 2006, something, 2006, 2007, and by the MPC of the City Council. There have been a series of subdivisions that were approved that brought in additional things, like the lake was shown on some of the plaques. We went back and pulled everything that we could find about that development. There were a lot of legal activity. I think Mr. Larkin sued the city a few times, but this is still an ongoing process. But you think back to, like I've shared with Mr. Hackney, in 2006, we were not as refined with PUDs as we are today, and trying to force a developer to do something that's really not quite clear that is required. We've gone through the idea of the definition of pocket parks, and they finally convinced me, the planning staff, that these were pocket parks, that were 15 of them. They were basically green space to me, but they finally convinced me with the information they found that they were pocket parks. I think that was a pavilion at one stage that was replaced by a lake. The lake was shown on a later subdivision. You can see how involved this is, but we're not through. I just wanted to get, out of respect to Mr. Hackney, I wanted to get him a report of what we had found, and I had planned to call them this week, but the last two weeks have been sort of eventful for the MPC staff, so I had not had an opportunity, but we plan to reach out to them.
Thank you, Mr. Clark. Mr. Hackney?
We've had three meetings with Mr. Larkin and Mr. Scott Sinclair, his attorney.
So, Mr. Hackney, please bear with us and stay in touch with Mr. Clark, and perhaps we can get you some results.
I would appreciate that, and so would the other residents of Esplanade. Thank you.
Yes, sir. Anyone else wish to speak at this time?
Good afternoon. Tim Agner with the Greater Street Report Chamber of Commerce, 400 Edward Street here in Shreveport, 71101. I just wanted to talk a little bit about the master plan and how critically important we think this is as a guiding document for our community, but also as a really critical embodiment of the wishes and aspirations of our community. It's something that, you know, since I've been here, has been held up as one of the hallmarks of a great way to do a process. It was a funnel that took in input and ideas from around the community and distilled it into a document that many people around the community really felt crystallized the goals and aspirations for the community. And so, as we begin to talk about the next stages for this, I want to make sure that we're embracing that inclusivity, that we're using this as a really great opportunity to reengage that entire cross-section of community. We represent about 1,100 businesses, about 80,000 employees in the area. I know there are other organizations around the community that represent a wide variety of perspectives. I would point your attention to the latest effort that the Convention Tourist Bureau did to develop a new brand for the city, and the process that they went through, they spoke to literally thousands of people across the area online in many of the ways that Mr. Clark articulated the process that's going forward. And so, as the chamber, I wanted to be here today to tell you that we are committed to the master plan, that we are committed to being a partner with you and with others in the community to help ensure that the document that comes out of this process is one that is reflective of not only who we are, but most importantly, who we want to be and who we can be together. So, I want to thank you for your diligence in this matter and want to let you know that, you know, we at the chamber are, you know, stand ready to work with you to ensure that this document can be all that we hope it is. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Agner. Anyone else wish to speak at this time? Yes, sir. Name an address, please.
My name is Ralph Blake. I live at 920 Ravendale Drive, Shreveport, 71107. My house is directly across from where the Ravendale apartments are going to be built. I have been trying to get in touch with Mr. Mellon, the developer, to see when he, when they planned to begin these apartments. When we had the North Highlands Association meeting, or at his first meeting where he had people come in, he said he planned to, or they planned to begin in June. And I sent an email and just to try to find out, and I have not received any information. I wondered if the MPC might know when they plan to begin. It's, I'm trying to make a decision whether I want to stay there or put my house up for sale or what with this, these three apartment buildings that are going to be built across the street from my house. Does anyone have any information from the MetroCard? Mr. Clark?
I'm going to give you my card, and I will help you get in touch with Mr. Mellon.
Okay. Thank you. I have another question, a proposal. The property right next to those apartments is a beautiful property that is up for sale. There is no park in North Highlands, and I've wondered, where are the children going to play for these apartment buildings? Some people here today have mentioned walking. In North Highlands, there are no sidewalks. In England, we said footpaths, but there are no sidewalks anywhere in North Highlands, and seniors take their lives in their hands when they're trying to walk along the street. So, a walking, a nice park on that area that's up for sale right now, I don't know how much they want for it, but it may be kind of hard for them to sell being next door to those three apartments buildings, but I think it's a beautiful, beautiful property, and it'd make a lovely park for North Highlands area and the people who live up north of the city. I don't know who would consider that, but...
Mr. Blake, I'm sorry. That might be a good suggestion for your council member.
Okay. Thank you very much.
I think she could initiate that process.
I appreciate that, Al. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
Patrick Harrison, 1130 Fullerton Avenue, Shreveport. I want to make a few comments regarding the master plan as well. There's been a lot of discussion and talk about the MPC's involvement in redoing the master plan, and while I think it's always probably a good idea to take something like that and certainly go back and review and make changes and adapt as needed, I don't agree with the approach that the MPC has taken so far with a very one-sided opinion about the I-49 intercity connector project. Dr. Philip Roisman spoke this morning on the radio, and he mentioned how involved he was as a chairman of that committee that developed, a vast group of people that developed that master plan. Out of respect to the people that did the work on that, they took input from many, many people, many organizations, and they gathered that around, and as mentioned, the I-49 intercity connector was a big part of that. I don't think it would be a good idea to take a consultant who obviously has ties and opinions about one side and just yank that out of the master plan. This is a community that is divided because we don't have an interstate system that is completed at this point. North Shreveport can't get to South Shreveport. North Bojor can't get to Yuri Drive corridor. South Shreveport residents, Broadmoor residents can't get to North Bojor people or MLK or Blanchard, and so it makes it very, very difficult to move around. So, everybody knows the I-49 intercity connector is a big project. It's probably the largest economic opportunity that we have right now to even consider hiring a consultant to purposely remove that from the master plan or use that as a means for disrupting the process that the Federal Highway Administration, the DOTD, and NLCOG has spent many, many years working on. There's obviously people on both sides of this issue. There's obviously pros and cons. I would, I've been a commissioner of the Levy Board for over 12 years, and I've studied ethics, and I have accused myself from different things, and I've always tried to take the high road for, as a commissioner, as a public representative, and to me, it's extremely important to keep things above board and as even and as representative of the entire community as you possibly can, even though you may not agree with that. I would respectfully ask for another minute if that's possible.
Any objections?
No.
Go ahead.
I think it, you know, the MPC has an opportunity to really step up, to take a couple of steps back, engage the public, engage the entire community, not just Allendale, not just the business community, but people from all around, and put together a process that would be completely inclusive and completely unbiased about the I-49. If you're going to address that issue, at least bring in people from both sides of the table, from both sides of the project, to explore opportunities to get involved with that. Lastly, I'll just say, the master plan is an excellent document. There's many things that have not been done yet in the master plan, and that, we need to focus on that as well, and I'm not object to making some improvements and tweaks to it. But I would leave the development and the massive undertaking of a federal interstate project to the Federal Highway Administration, NLCOG, and to the DOTD of Louisiana. Thank you very much.
Mr. Harrison, let me ask you a question.
Sure.
Your last comment was to let the feds and the state and the council of governments handle the interstate project?
Ultimately, they are the ones responsible for making those decisions, yes.
Does that mean if this board were to update the master plan, that we should not consider the connector in that master plan update?
No, I think the master plan should have that in there because it is a part of our community. You cannot, the intercity connector is obviously going to be a part of Shreveport. If it's built, it will be in Shreveport. So, I think it was mentioned in the master plan. It has been a part of the master plan all along. There's not a deep dive into how that should be done or whatever. It's just a supportive part of the, I mean, it is a part of the master plan and has been in support of completing, and I think that, just leave it at that. I mean, the process is taking place on a very in-depth level from multiple federal agencies to do everything they are supposed to do according to federal guidelines for a federal and state highway project. I would just let... I would just let them continue that process without interrupting that with a distraction of a local MPC board now taking a position on an I-49 intercity connector project.
Well, now I'm confused because you say the connector project should be considered in the context of an update of the master plan, but you don't want us to get in the way of the project. That sort of prescribes the outcome, doesn't it?
The outcome has already been prescribed in that master plan, and that is to complete it. It's been very supportive to complete that.
I'm sorry, hold on a second. Mr. Clark, does the master plan of 2010 address the connector?
The master plan, if I remember correctly, does speak about the intercity connector. I don't think that, at that time, which is being recommended to this body, that the MPC board wanted to take a position on how I-49 came totally through Shreveport, but to the fact that it should be completed. And I think that's what this gentleman is saying.
That's correct.
I sit on the policy board of NLCOG with the mayor of the city of Shreveport, the mayor of the city of Bojor, the director of the Shreveport-Bojor Port Commission, the MPC director of Bojor Parish MPC, representative of the parish administrator from Cattle Parish, the parish administrator from Bojor Parish, and representatives from Webster and De Soto Parish. And that is the body that will make a recommendation to NLCOG, who will work with the Federal Highway Administration and Louisiana Department of Transportation. And at a later date, I was speaking to Kent Rogers earlier in this meeting. If you recall, I shared with you that I'd asked Dr. Calabota to come and address you with an update of where that process was. We're still coordinating that meeting, it will not be a special call meeting, since the city attorney has told, advised us not to do special call meetings for that purpose, but they will come to one of your regular meetings, give you an update on where we are in the process, give you an update on how the process will be conducted, and I think you will benefit from that, and we can quietly go about doing the things that we really need to do. We have a city that's in trouble, we have a city suffering with poverty, we have a city suffering with uneducated, undereducated, unemployed, underemployed, all kind of trying issues that this master plan needs to be trying to conduct because we've just sort of laid idle for a couple of years. We really did nothing. But it is time to act and do something and go about, as I said earlier in the opening remarks, serving our citizens, who are our true resource, the greatest resource we have, our citizens, and they're suffering and they're hurting. So, I've tried to stay out of this, and I will continue to try to stay out of this process. I am more concerned about us updating the master plan, and if I may, while I'm talking, Mr. Chair, I heard Dr. Magna say that he just got an acknowledgement from his letter, but I read every letter, noted in every punctuation mark in it, and I'm very aware of some of those concerns.
The update of the master plan is not being driven by Interstate forty-nine. Well, hold on a second. The update of the master plan is being driven by the fact the master plan is thirteen years old, and the master plan itself calls for updates every five years, so we're overdue on that process. That's why we're doing the update. Some of us here would like to see transportation be a part of that update. I don't know if it will or not. I think it's mostly a citizen-driven process, so the people who turn out at the meetings are going to have a say in what that master plan says. We've had five public hearings today on five different cases, special use permits, closures and abandonments, rezonings, et cetera. Each one of them had a multi-page staff analysis. This board in 2016 voted unanimously to endorse the connector without one page of I find that somewhat confusing because this is a body of planners, and you're talking about a three and a half mile project that has no staff analysis, no land use analysis at all. So, we're on different sides of the issue of the connector, Mr. Harrison. But the question raised last week by the Allendale Strong folks was, why is there no land use analysis when we build an interstate highway through our city? I think it's a decent question. I don't think it's been adequately answered, yes, yet. So, you're wanting us to... I'm sorry, go ahead.
You have a comment from the city attorney.
I just want to again remind the board that we cannot, per the city attorney's advisement, not to discuss any issues concerning the master plan in connection to last week's meeting until further review and research by the city attorney.
Okay, the lawyers have spoken.
Can I just comment to that?
Yes, sir, go ahead.
I agree with some of what you said, however, the meeting, special meeting that was called was very one-sided from a group of, from a very small part of our community. That was the Allendale. You've been involved in Allendale Strong, there was people here from Allendale Strong, Ken Mitchell's a huge part and probably founder of Allendale Strong. So, that was a very one-sided opinion that was very anti-interstate, talking about an interstate project. I don't, I mean, that's biased. And that came here, for some reason, to try to convince this board to utilize the master plan as a vehicle to change the design, potential design of the interstate to a boulevard? I mean, there was a lot discussed in that meeting. But you didn't hear any benefits from what the interstate actually would bring to the community as a whole. And I'm talking Bojor, you know, the whole area, the region, business, residents, economic development, jobs, there's a lot there, not just about Allendale. That intercity connector is about Shreveport, it's about Bojor, it's about northwest Louisiana, it's about Louisiana, and it's about ultimately connecting an interstate from Winnipeg to New Orleans for interstate commerce. It's a big deal. And I'm just saying that if we're going to have discussions like we did with a special meeting to bring in a special one-sided opinion to influence MPC members to do some action, I think you should hear from both sides. That's all I'm saying. I'm not, I know that there's disagreements, and I very much respect that. But I think everybody needs to be heard equally, and that whole, when you're going to explore the process of this master plan, just try to keep this as above board and honest and ethical as you possibly can. That's all I'm asking, I'm not saying do it my way. Last week, they said do it our way, that was a clear message, and that's why there was so much backlash in the media all week long about this. And that's why, if this had taken place, this room would have been packed out to the street. I respect the fact that y'all pulled that to give it a lot, to rethink that process. I think that was an excellent decision, and you can take some time, and y'all can evaluate it and talk about it amongst yourselves and figure out what the best approach to take and game plan moving forward with that. That's all I'm saying. I just try to keep that above board and honest and transparent, and it is what it is. And I think the community would build respect back into the MPC, and you would really gain a lot of credibility, in my opinion.
Thank you, Mr. Harrison.
Thank you.
Anybody else wish to speak? Okay.
One last announcement, if I can, Mr. Chair.
Go ahead, Mr. Clark.
Next month, due to July fourth being only Tuesday, we've changed the meeting date to July twelfth. And Char, as she always does, much better than I will ever do, will make sure that y'all get that information, but I wanted to announce it while you were here today. That's all I have, thank you.
Okay, the chair recognizes the chair for just a moment. I did make a statement in an article I sent out this week that said the May thirty, excuse me, the May thirty-one meeting was abbreviated because of the time constraints and did not allow for a full measure of opinion by both sides, and I did call for a follow-up special meeting. So, I'm not sure how we approached that, maybe a consensus of board members and the staff. I don't know the answer to that, I just wanted to put that on the floor.
I would ask that you allow the city attorney to make a determination on that issue going forward because of all of the concerns that have been expressed about that meeting and the actual legality of that meeting, so I would ask that you wait until the city attorney gives you an opinion on that process.
Sounds good to me. Any more questions or comments? Anybody else? Okay, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn. Any opposition?